Minutes after the meeting.
Yep. You have to do that.
Welcome to the Biloxi City Council Meeting of Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. Obviously, we have a substitution proposed. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by George Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nathan Barrett. Would you please read the... All in favor? We're four one. I'm going to be in opposition. I am. Yeah, we can hear you.
That's all. I think they have amended.
Moved by George Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Nathan Barrett. All in favor of the agenda as amended? Motion carries four to one. Don't mean it's in opposition. And I'll tell you why I'm in opposition. We didn't have discussion, but I just don't think it's the opportune time to add something as a substitution to the budget that creates or increases the tax of any kind. I think it's wrong to do it at the last minute. It should carry more discussion time. That will take us to the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor, your report?
Yeah, let me do this first. I asked you to spread the expenses of Biloxi travel credit card to the units. And be back off a little bit. But we've been meeting the officials on a constant basis and we're in this state. We're in the state of emergency. Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
All right, very good. Well, as I said, everybody knows this is, you know, we're waiting for the eye of the storm to pass over us, but we've been taking, you know, some measures to, to, I guess, mitigate what, you know, the opportunity to spread this virus. At this point in time, we're in a phase of personnel emergency and that for us, about a hundred and six, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, about a hundred and sixty-four people are in a, I guess, what do we call them?
Shelter.
Shelter, shelter in place and administrative leave and I think twenty-four of those are self-employed. I like Mike.
Twenty-four self-employed.
Ended up today, though, there are three hundred and six police in power on the job and about a hundred and thirty-eight of the main departments, public works, parks and community development, you know, taking care of business. And I think the curfew has been effective for the most part and we want to thank everybody, all the stores and people that take this seriously to reflect the numbers. Compared to the other places on the coast, we're doing pretty good. I think it was seventy-nine, I believe, eighty-five, maybe, but it's, I think, doing a great job in Harrison County. We've been hitting on Tuesday and Friday basis with all the mayors and some of the counties. Again, we're the only one, like I said, except for Harris, any county Sheriff's Department where we actually broke the premium pay. So those folks who are working are getting the premium pay the time and a half. And, you know, we actually have a holiday coming up on this Friday, but we're in a mode where trying to take care of business and get to a skeleton crew and we probably will be skinny it down even past then. There's no real assurance that anything will get reimbursed. So we're in a mode of let's take care of business and that's what we're doing. So without the stream of revenue that's coming about, we're taking care of what we need to do. Our employees, first of all, by showing up, I think they're enjoying a little bit of a relief as far as pay and the work that they're doing. So we appreciate everybody who is working and, you know, it's so serious that anybody could imagine going through over and over. Hopefully, within, you know, few weeks, that peak will be reached. I think the Georgetown, or actually the University of Washington group peaks, tell us that Mississippi will peak on the 21st. That's the over and under line and I don't know which way to bet over or on. But, you know, it's something that's, say it, we will handle this and so we'll do everything we can to survive. And I think everybody here and everybody out there, this is really a time to pull together, not literally, but I think the efforts that were made, you know, with the governor and his efforts to shut it down, I think it'll work and we're doing our part down here. So I'm really encouraged and would ask, you know, if you have any questions, I'm actually, I don't know if I've covered everything, but I'm actually here to repeat anything that we know or we've learned.
One thing I had, we didn't just make this plan, just set a motion with our ordinance second fifteen, one day, twenty-one hours to work from emergency. So we have, we had the ordinance of the guidance, we wanted to do the capacity, the capacity to maximize the number of employees that have to perform and take it home and still remember the number of services that we partner, all made those calls. Looking at a community council, but right now we're setting that, that numbers maker, that's a great many people, that's a great lead with pay, that's a call, that's right out of our ordinance. Those that are not administrative, they are, are premium paid, which means time.
Time and a half.
During past, when there was a police fire, all the first responders and dispatches and so forth, other parts of the city, especially way back, not to, we've been on routine stuff, like grass cutting and so forth, trying to understand what the trash is doing, that we need to find. Best area of all the works and parks, we put a, that's a charter and come on, on paper.
Let me add too, I think Chief, both Chiefs, Chief Miller and Chief Moni, I think that you can tell that the normal calls have been going in the right direction for us as far as calls for service for both police and fire. So I think the curfew had a lot to do with it and the seriousness of the situation has benefited, you know, normal business that maybe some other folks are not seeing. And Biloxi Chief, both y'all, you know, back me up there. And I think we're going along the right path when it comes to taking care of the, actually the police and fire and the public safety. So that concludes my report and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
George has a question.
Yeah, I got one. I had a couple of questions. What are we doing now with Fred Hayes since we?
Okay, you know, we need to commemorate. Now, actually, you might see that thing out there that will, I call it the, you know, a mock-up of the Saturn V B, I think, first stage. And, you know, again, we're in the process, the city has donated twenty-five thousand, Mississippi powers donated fifty thousand, I think, and some other. But anyway, basically, on the 11th, we'll commemorate and we'll mark the 50th anniversary of Apollo 13. Fred actually is going to come here and we're going to do a little presentation. Not a, we won't violate the 10-plus rule, but I think it's certainly an honor, of course, you talk about a hero, and it's similar to the situation that the world was going through back then, 50 years ago. The whole world was trying to figure this thing out and they did. And I think that's, it would be appropriate to at least, you know, note that at 13:13 Eastern Standard Time, Apollo 13 would have launched, April 11, 50 years ago. So we're planning on doing that in a form or fashion with Fred Hayes being there. So it's, I think it is appropriate and something that is, you know, worth noting, that, you know, only 24 human beings have been around that moon and back and even certainly one of them grew up not too far from here.
I said, I just wanted to, I've been watching it on Mrs. TV show.
Yeah.
And the thing Mary out had that much trouble and she won't quit working on that anniversary. It's pretty amazing that somebody got that dedicated and him gone 50 years ago, you know. I was a kid back then.
I was never a kid. I was twenty-nine back then.
Another question, I spoke to you before about the South's contract in front of casinos. Have y'all tried to fast track that where you can get the bid out when other things down right now? It's a good time to be working on Highway 90.
Well, what we're actually doing, and Walk can back me up here, we're trying to get St. Michael's one and two, the part of the South's contract, we're waiting on some deep work to take place at Maple Street and Howard Avenue in order to finish the bid. Is that correct, Walt? In order to put it out for bid. So that's our next step. So that's that part. But as we roll through the remaining two phases of the South's contract, part of the specifications is that we will minimize the disruption to the business, you know, and even work two shifts when it comes to those areas, especially close to this street here. So that will be maybe reflective in a little bit higher cost, but they may work in two shifts instead of one shift. So we learned that from the North contract and we hope that will be reflective in the less disruption. Now, as we go to the West, it's not, you know, it's more along the beach and not too much disruption, but at least these two phases that hit this part of the deal, again, the East Coast, St. Michael's one and two will be, I guess, within a number of months bid. Is that right, Walt?
Yes, sir.
May.
We just, we have an opportunity to work on where everybody's closed.
Yeah.
With highway traffic, you know, it's a good time to be doing that. So I know we wouldn't, if something jumped in, we got into trouble, but it's my opportunity for something like that to help us to be there instead of opening up to 10 of Highway 90. You know, that would look bad on our part. Another question, somebody asked me if RVs essential. Is it an essential business, RV parks in it?
It's essential business.
Yeah, somebody called.
Like a hotel, I would think, you know, as far as, you know, is a hotel an essential business?
No, that's what I'm asking you.
And RV would be falling in that same category, I think.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to find out. I was going to have something to reply back to this, man.
Yeah.
Didn't really know if that would.
Yeah, I would look at it as.
So what?
I would. I would look at it as essential, just like a hotel.
So, I mean, they could stay open through all those towns we have right now?
Interbide by the, you know, the guidelines, yeah.
Yeah, man, when I asked the question if it had found out that it was true or not, so I didn't know. So that's why I brought that up.
Yeah.
I think, thank you to Mayor and thank Robert Dennons. You know, seeing the communication great right now and he gets the email to us pretty quick. So from our last meeting, the last discussion we had, I seen it working out. That's what we needed. At least we had information. As soon as you give it to him, he pretty much puts it on the, so thank you and thank Robert for doing that.
I don't know whether I closed my report or not, but we were doing some testing of, but anyway, we hope to do it even better. You know, something we learned with Billy and some of the mayors, how easy go to meeting is being done. And of course, our intention was to put both chiefs on that screen right there. And we're, Vincent was helping us in testing either your smartphone. I don't think the flip phone will work. So we've got a PC of every flavor. But we're working, working that out and it'll make those things easier. Now, I think we do play by the same rules, so only the first three get in free on some of these meetings. So without, you know, your lawyer, you got to tell us what, but it would be our intention, you know, to make those opportunities more available.
One last question on Oak Street, the railroad track. I don't know whether you or Walt can answer that. The people on the side streets like Crawford getting so much traffic because Oak Street is closed. Is there any timeline when it's going to be finished, Oak Street?
Give me lanes.
On railroad track.
That's the railroad track.
The contractor laying construction, putting sixteen-inch water main, they're testing it now. They're having a little bit of difficulty with the water main holding pressure. They're going to see if they got an issue with it, but all the physical work should be done unless you got to test it. Not nationally, but they're testing it. They're trying to figure out why it's.
All right, thank you.
That's all.
Does that include your report? Does that include your report?
It includes my report.
It's my report. I know, that's why I was in jest.
Say that.
Mr. Mayor, is that all?
Thank you.
George, do you have anything else?
Just a couple of things. First thing I'd like to do is thank the citizens of City of Biloxi.
Do we want to go to the Chiefs right now?
I'll wait.
Chief Miller, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
All right, the department reports, we see, you have the floor.
I hear you.
All right, thank you. Now, since the curfew started on April 2nd, we've been running two special detail to deal with the curfew, property crimes and the beach and social gatherings. So that first shift comes in at noon and then leaves at midnight at six officers. The second shift comes in at six and in the evening, it leaves at six in the morning, that's six officers. Since March 24th, they've answered about nineteen hundred and eighteen calls for service. Now, that's separate from our regular call for service. That's just for the details. So we know that that's working because property crimes are down 51% from this time last year and they're down 38% on average over the past five years during the same time period. So we know that's working. Then we have our regular patrol officers and there's two shifts of those coming in, twelve on each shift that come in at six to six and six to six. So far, there's been about fifteen individuals that have threatened suicide. We have one that actually committed suicide. Forty-five were contacted during the curfew and made aware of the order and they complied. Although three during that same time period that did not comply, they were arrested. So that's the only two arrests that we have so far. Everyone else has done pretty much what we asked them to do. We have had quite a few issues with the homeless breaking into some vacant buildings and being disorderly. Right now, the county jail has, and completely understandable, they have reduced what they will accept charge-wise at the county jail. So it kind of leaves us with, you know, in order to cut down on the contamination. So it kind of leaves us with some people that we don't have anywhere to take them when we're arrested. So we can hold them for six hours. If we give them a meal, we can hold them for eight hours under federal law. So we're doing the best we can do with that. You still hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So in reference to the missions, two short mission is serving meals, breakfast and lunch, Monday, Thursdays and Sundays. We're allowing 10 people to come up and get their food and then leave and then 10 more can come up. So they're controlling that pretty good. Roes and fishes Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. And they're just handing out two days of supplies of food, groceries, kind of a grab and go thing. And that seems to be working out also. That April 2nd, that first night of the curfew, we had ninety-two calls in reference to the curfew, beach closing, fishing, essential businesses, addiction and camping. The following night on April 3rd, we had a hundred and sixty or more about the same issues. So those are palmed way down now. But we do have four, we have one dispatcher that's out. We're waiting for a test back on her quarantine. We have one investigator that's quarantined with his, because of his wife, she's ill. And then we have two patrol officers that are quarantined. We're waiting on results. But at this point, no one has tested positive yet. And then I got some news today. I don't know how true this is, but I'll share it with the council and maybe, we heard today, the cop, the cop Ford went out to the Broadwater Golf Course yesterday and took a trailer load of grills and tents for the homeless and told him he would try to get back with affordable shower and restrooms for them. Now, that's what we were told. It sounded legitimate, but I have not talked to Mr. Ford to find out if that's active or not. And I think that concludes my report.
Robert.
What I heard was that there were more officers on the street today than there were before the start, just because of how these are being organized?
Yeah, they do.
That there are property crimes are down, violent crimes are down.
If you're asking me a question, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Think the violent crimes and statistics, I think he was asking about that, right, Mike? Yeah, everything is down, like I think he indicated, in which we're grateful for.
Did I, I heard you correct. You said there's only been three arrests because of curfew?
Chief.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't hear what they're asking. If you could just ask me.
Because of the curfew, has that brought the crime numbers down a little bit?
Yeah, crime numbers are way down. No, very few violent crimes and property crimes, like I said, are down 51%, which is just unbelievably remarkable from last year at this time.
Ask that curfew, the arrests, so only three?
Was it only, you know?
Three arrests because of the curfew?
Was there only three arrests?
Curfew.
Curfew arrests?
There's only been three arrests pertaining to the COVID detail that were, only three. Now, we made up the arrest, normal arrest, but only three that were related to either curfew or some type of property crime or something like that.
All right, now we got you, everybody. Peter?
Yes, sir. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. In the fire department, we're, a lot of our efforts are going to managing the medical end of the COVID situation. We have a number of people out. We have nine firefighters who have tested positive for COVID and are, I'm happy to say, they're all at home in different stages of the virus, but none of them appear to be in any real danger. They're, most of them are on their way on the outside of it, on the backside of it. So it's clearing up. We have also a number of people who, we have a total right now of twenty-three people as of five o'clock this afternoon. And we had one called in at about four o'clock and was complaining of symptoms. So we have since sent him to be tested. So we have a total of about twenty, of twenty-three people who are out for one reason or another. There's another, we have four that we're awaiting confirmation on their tests, another four of them. The rest of them are out with either family or, you know, have symptoms but do not meet the requirements to be tested. So we're erring on the side of, on good judgment and the CDC's regulations and they're requiring us to keep them out. And if their symptom, their symptoms have lessened within seventy-two hours, they can come back after their symptoms have gotten less or better, I guess I should say. So we're dealing with a number of people out to deal with that. And I expressed to the, at the directors meeting, we have canceled all scheduled leave for our firefighters. So that's, you know, vacations or whatever. And we have shut, we closed, we've shut down engine 25, which is at station five. We have two engines run out of station five. We've shut one of them down because our call volume has dropped. We're running, we ran eighty-four calls last week. Typically, we run between a hundred and forty and a hundred and sixty calls a week for assistance. So it's dropped, it dropped about half last week. It's crept up this week and I fully expect it to be back over a hundred for the current week. We are constantly meeting, two days a week, we're meeting with the, all the Harrison County Fire Chiefs and AMR. We're trying to find the best way to respond. Everybody's working together very well. But this is a fluid situation and between CDC and the state, State Medical Department, we're finding ourselves on numerous calls a day to find out the best processes for responding to these calls. And we have to adjust, constantly adjust. But we're working through that. Our guys are committed. They're, they're happy to be, they're glad to be in the fight. And we have no issues with people wanting to be off. They appear to be, want to be there. So at this time, I believe that's about all from our report.
Let me just add for, this is underlasted. When we started having problems with the fire department and people turned positive, it was station seven, then it was station five. But that one was tracked back to seven, then it was station six, was tracked back to station seven. We found that virtually everybody was infected and tested positive. We backed it one single event. They'd all have been involved in it. So.
Right.
One of the things we did early on is we contacted Bay Test Control. Bay Test Control is the company that does the city's pest control all over the city. They agreed to skip the pest control, instead of use their equipment, looks like a ghostbusters when they go out, use their equipment to disinfect buildings of the city. We disinfected the room that you're in right now and downstairs the city. All we, even went to station seven, station five, almost station six, station one. Everywhere that's been positive, we disinfected ours. They actually at least disinfected all the harbor master hubs. So we're trying to get ahead of places where unlike place for most part, fire department, you know, they're in very close quarters for all areas of town. So it's a much higher risk of the virus spreading in those groups. And as they get sick and we start to have major staff, keep with that marvelous job of moving people around to cover. And we heard you guys just taken one, one couple of hours off the line. So they're doing everything they can to keep operating. And one of the major things is they stopped doing all of those medical calls. Reason the calls are down is they used to do all these medical calls, AMRs are going now. So they've reduced the number, they're only doing adverts. Is that what you would call the chief, the ones that you're still doing?
I can't hear the question. Can you repeat it?
Medical calls.
Are you still doing?
Medical calls? Yes, we are, we are doing medical calls. The only thing we have, we have stopped doing is general illness calls. If someone calls and says they stubbed their toe or, you know, their gout's hurting or something like that, something that's not a life-threatening call, we respond to. We've changed our protocol. As I said, we're constantly changing and evolving, but we are still responding to any life-threatening calls that come up.
Okay, questions? Thank you both, Chief Miller, Chief Moni, that's now the end of our department report.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes your entire report? Thank you. George, do you still have report?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. I'm just getting, while I go, I'm going to tell you, I'd like to thank the citizens, City of Biloxi. They did a great job, 99% doing everything right. And evidently it's working. You know, it's stopping the spread and the only way you can kill viruses is stopping the spread. And the citizens of Biloxi and Mississippi have stepped up and done the right thing. We had no problems on the beaches. I had to say we need to close them. Problems are somewhere else. Everybody's actually been doing what they're supposed to be doing. And you see the people walking on the beach, they six foot apart, people running, jogging. the people walking on the beach, they're six foot apart. People run and jog them. They had to do some exercises. So, thank you to the citizens of Biloxi for doing such a great job. We appreciate that. As leaders, you know, we should probably be showing them what they're actually doing and showing us, you know? Like I had a six o'clock meeting. Would have to do it next month? Had to meet at one-thirty. You tell everybody to be up at six o'clock, and we're in a six o'clock meeting. So, you know, we need to step up and do the right thing too sometime. We all could have been at one-thirty properly, not any problem. I mean, I just think that's something, when you're showing people and asking people not to gather and tend to what they've done, you have people stay home, they've been doing it. So, you know, to me, we as a council and administration need to buy them out of rules that we set off everybody else. We don't have a problem doing that. You know, right now, we're not doing anything. I could probably meet at ten o'clock in the morning, which is pretty rare for me, being up that early. But anyway, question I need to find out, you know, I know y'all had all these groups together on the Bonnie, Carol spillway. Why'd they open again? I know it rained big up the top of Mississippi. So, they never contacted anybody down here?
Well, there was actually some lawsuits on behalf of the coalition, and, and they've been trying to coordinate that along with the Secretary of State, and nobody's successful with the Corps of Engineers at this point. Uh, you know, they tell us how many bays they're gonna have and how much, you know, until the flow gets down to whatever level. Uh, it's the same old, same old. Nobody's paying attention to Mississippi.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty bad. We already down on the coast of Mississippi, and now we're losing seafood industry again. I mean, it's tough enough. It's difficult for us right now.
The, the only, you know, silver lining, the temperature, you know, the, the, the water temperature is not, uh, in, in a touch that it's going to cause algae bloom at this point in time. But if we had this in, in the summertime, that's what, uh, you know, and who knows whether we will have it again. But anyway, that, that the only upside of him pulling the thing right now.
I'm just wanting to check on, because I knew y'all were trying to have groups and trying to meet with the people. I know that Michael Watson stepped up and said he was trying to do something to stop it from opening, but.
You know, talk is cheap, you know, and, and that, that's the situation. I think we had, Peter might want to update that on, on, uh, the, uh, the motions to the, uh, the coalition was ready to, to put at court. Do you, you, you have an update on that?
We filed, uh, we filed for expedited discovery this week, actually like last week because of, who actually have taken it to the court. Now, has anyone, uh, took? I mean, they have said that they're only going to keep it open for roughly a month, so they do not intend to create any issues. So, they're definitely aware of our presence, but we still don't have that statement to take it. But, uh, what's going on?
So, such a happy work, and that's a good thing for us. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Gines?
Yeah, um, just a few things. Um, just wanted to, like George said, uh, the community is pretty resilient. However, um, you know, I am concerned about a lot of the children and, uh, people who are out in the community. I'm seeing too much activity. I'm still seeing too many people are close together. I, I wouldn't be opposed to anything like a six-to-six curfew, and I think, um, this is for me to ask the mayor to make, consider that when you talk to the mayor, because again, happen to go across the state. I appreciate of, uh, Governor Reeves, who, who, who released them staggering numbers, which are pretty much across, uh, across the country, uh, African-American, which, um, our potential is, of course, they are vast, and some of the departments have been, and I would hate for that to happen here in our state. Uh, African, African-American community is about thirty-seven percent of the state, but fifty percent of the numbers here in this state. In Louisiana, it's seventy percent of the deaths in Louisiana with only thirty percent of the population. Uh, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, it's eighty percent of the deaths with maybe thirty percent of the population. So, I'm saying that, you know, um, in, in the community that I represent, I'm looking at, you know, the kids that are out there and the activities that are going on. And so, we need to stress, not just African-Americans, but to everyone, how serious and how dangerous this is. And, and we can help flatten the curve. We may need to go, I mean, it may sound a little strange going six-to-six, but I think that we need to possibly start looking at stretching that curfew hour, hours a little, little deeper than where we're at now, because a lot of it's being ignored. Uh, but I, but I think the, uh, police force, they're doing a great job out there in the community. I see them all over the place. Uh, they have a lot going on, and I'm watching them doing their due diligence. Uh, a lot of kids, they think they're on spring break now, and, um, it would also help alleviate them a little more if we could scratch the curfew out, because we got a lot of kids roaming around. So, that concludes my report, and like I said, the mayor just wanted to, and I said the next meeting that we can possibly look at a six-to-six across the coast, but it's not going to work unless all of us do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gines. Councilwoman Newman. Councilman Tisdale?
Thank you. I knew it'd come around. I know. Uh, I, I do want to make a couple of observations. Uh, first of all, Chief Miller's been kind enough to arrange that I'm able to go on a couple of ride-alongs with some of the officers in the evening. Went on one this past Saturday with Officer Dean. I'd been on one in January with Officer Maylie, and I would encourage you, uh, if you've not done that, to see the, your law enforcement officers at work, and they are terrific. They're very professional. I made plans to, uh, to go from nine to two Saturday night at eleven-thirty. There's nothing happening, which was a good thing, as Chief Miller noted. Folks by and large are honoring the curfew. I would, uh, want to echo what, uh, Councilman Gines said. I, I think the, and what George said as well, and I think that the residents and the citizens of Biloxi are really doing a good job by and large. But we can do a little better. As, uh, Councilman Gines noted, the, the key to all of this, of course, is travel or the restriction thereof, because the more travel, the more folks that are out there traveling, the more likely transmission is to occur. So, um, I think the more we can do sooner, more restrictive we can be sooner, I think we will be better served in the long run. And I want to compliment the, the mayor and his staff and the department heads. I think they're doing a great job under the circumstances. Um, you know, typically, when, when we face adversity down here with hurricanes, we don't have power. Thank God we have power and air conditioning. But, uh, really, good job by the staff and, um, good, good job by the community. We can do a little bit better, though. Um, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Barrett? Oh, excuse me, Councilman Glavine?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'll tell you what, it, it's, it's been, uh, it's been difficult for all of our citizens in Biloxi, but, uh, hats off to every single citizen that is making the sacrifices with their family. Uh, it's time for them to reconnect with their faith. Uh, do the yard work, honey do's around the house. You have, uh, mothers and grandmothers, uh, spending time with Google classrooms, that they're learning what that concept is. And, uh, listen, hats off to our children, too, that are learning what this is all about. Uh, you know, I made a mistake during Katrina. I, my kids back then, uh, were in high school, and I moved them to another state, thinking to keep them away from this, uh, calamity, which was Katrina. But I have a, I have some grandsons now that are living through what this is, and to spend time teaching them what the virus is and, and what it means and the sacrifices that we're, uh, taking means a lot, and it really connects home when you see in their eyes that they're learning at such a little, a, a, a small age. Um, my heart is also completely broken in hearing the news of our firefighters, that this virus has swept through that station, and, uh, not only the firefighters, we've had one of our firefighters, uh, Keith Williamson, lost both his grandparents within hours of each other to the virus in Long Beach. If you read the, uh, news article in the paper about the Long Beach couple, that was, uh, Keith Williamson's, uh, grandparents. Um, but the message that the mayor has been doing every day, I applaud you for being, uh, on the, on the, uh, airways every single day, telling people to wash their hands, social distancing, shell, sheltering, uh, only go out and, uh, stay in small numbers. We see our businesses that are allowing, uh, in a lot of cases, one customer at a time in, in their stores. Um, that, that is all good stuff, and we're seeing, we're encouraged by what we've recently seen. We don't know if it's, if we're ahead of the curve or we still got another ways to go. I would assume we got a little ways to go, so we can't let our guard down seeing some good news. You know, we saw the anticipated deaths in Mississippi drop from nine hundred and something to less than three hundred, and that's good. I hope that continues so we can, uh, definitely get back to work soon. Um, and then riding around the, and I want to applaud, uh, also, Councilman Gines. He had the foresight of getting some, uh, magnetic stickers for the, uh, for his vehicle, and he, he shared, he shared a couple, well, he didn't share, but, uh, he said, here's a couple if you, if you want them, and, uh, be able to put those on the side of the car and drive through the neighborhoods, and when people see it, you can see they're, they're glad that their council members are riding around their neighborhoods, rolling down the window, checking on them. Uh, I rolled down the window. I saw an elderly man the other day, and I said, listen, are you okay? He said, no, I can't get out. I said, well, I'll go get you something. I said, what do you need? He said, well, if you go get me a six pack of beer, that would be great. But hey, that's, that's important, too. But, uh, but people are connecting in ways that they, they haven't connected before, and that, that's going to be important, because we got a long way to go, not just in the coming weeks and when we, we restart, but I'm sure there's a lot of hurdles, uh, that we're going to be facing. Um, two more things, uh, and I want to touch on the Bonnie, uh, Carrie spillway. I was on that call the other day with Corps of Engineers, and, uh, Count, uh, Gerald Blessy was on the call, too, among others, of a hundred and forty-five people on the call. Um, it's going to be hard to move that needle. Uh, I don't know if y'all realize, we planted one million adult oysters this season. One million adult oysters we planted in Pasc hurstan, by St. Joe, and in Biloxi, in hopes that those adult oysters would make little oysters and, and, and kind of bring the ecology back. Uh, the, the information that we have, if it's only open for thirty days, they probably can weather the intrusion of the river water, but if it, if it's the same thing as last year, we're going to be in trouble. I asked one question on that call to the Corps, and it was, listen, if you knew that opening another spillway, uh, such as the Morganza, uh, and that was a better alternative, would you do it or could you do it? And the answer was, sir, I'm sorry, but we're following the nineteen twenty-eight congressional, uh, legislation that was passed, and it instructs us to do this when the gauge is at seventeen feet or whatever the, the gauge is, and that's what we're following. So, that's what General Toy is doing. He's following the letter of that nineteen, let it sink in a little bit, twenty-eight legislation. So, until we get Washington's attention up there and they realize that, hey, there's something wrong with this pitcher, maybe after almost a hundred years, maybe we need to look at that, that directive and, and what y'all are doing here, maybe there is an alternative. And, and they are, but we, we don't have the actual studies, but we know that there are floodplains upriver that can absorb some of the water. We know the Morganza would, would take care of a little bit of the water and, and not put the whole burden on, on the state of Mississippi, and, uh, we certainly need to get their attention somewhere, some way, somehow, and I know we're trying to do that, uh, through some, uh, protective orders similar to the Grand Canyon. I think there's a protective order that they use for the Grand Canyon, and we're trying to protect some of the waters over here with that same legislation. But we got, we got a long battle with that, too. Um, and then, uh, finally, uh, President Deming, what I'd like to ask you and the administration to, is to begin, uh, maybe scheduling in May some budget talks. We're, um, certainly, we got budget, uh, revisions that we're going to have to look at, and what our revenue projections are or not going to be. I work very closely in the tourism industry, and I'll tell you what, if we start at May first, if a week from now they said, okay, this thing is settling down, and you can start up May first. Typically, May, we'd probably be running seventy-five percent occupancy in May. We'll probably run fifteen to twenty-five percent in May if we started up today. We're seeing groups in May and June that are now saying, if you get open, we'll move to August or the end of August. Um, but they're at their tipping point. We may lose the supervisors, big convention. Mississippi municipals, big convention. We got National Guard, we got tons of, of groups that are ready to rebook, but we're, we're reaching the breaking point here, and what I'm trying to say is, you'll probably see that June, July, normally ninety-five percent occupancy months for the hotels. You're probably going to see somewhere around sixty, sixty, sixty-five. August may be a little blip. We may see a little bit of those groups get into August, but I'm telling you what, and as follows the, the people that stay in the hotel rooms, so follows the other people that spend in our retail and, and casinos and, and other things. So, um, we got a serious, uh, challenge in, on our hand, but we'll meet that challenge, but we're going to have to know what those numbers are, and if we start early, we can start making adjustments and decisions, and we'll be all on that same page that we're talking about and bite the bullet so that we can get back hopefully to a, a normal two, two thousand twenty-one. And I'm sorry for my long report, but that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine, and I agree. I think we do need to get on the scheduling of the budget hearings, um, pretty quickly. It's going to be here before we know it. I don't have much of a report. I'm going to turn this to citizens of comments. Did we set anything up? It never needs to speak. Councilman Garrett, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't have much. I would just like to echo the thanks to our police and fire department, and then, um, my ward is a little different than most as far as we don't have a ton of businesses. It's mostly residential, and so, um, you know, outside of Toronto's Love Shack, the Dollar Stores, a couple of gas stations, the Chevron Station, yes. Um, you know, we, we don't have a whole lot going on, so when you get out on the street, I've been doing the same thing, getting out and riding around, um, you know, in the afternoons at night, just to sort of see, and it's, I drove probably four miles last night and didn't see one vehicle out. But I agree with, um, Councilman Gines. The one thing that I do see is, I, I live in Eagle Point, and it's, it's the kids, and they're not, you see a golf cart with six kids, and you know these families, and every one of them's from a different family. And so, I think that is the biggest issue that we face spreading the disease right now. For the most part, I know we found the number around ninety-nine percent of the people are obeying what's been asked of them. But if, if we could just somehow, and I don't know how, you know, uh, six-to-six curfew, I don't know how we could handle that with businesses that are open beyond six and stuff like that. But if, I think that if we could somehow address, and I don't even know how you would go about doing it, but I think that that's the biggest thing, is people in neighborhoods. Um, I even saw it when I, I came down, I went down, um, Bayview and then came all the way down La Muse, and I saw groups of people sitting out together, and, and there's no way that all these people live in one house. And even on the gas station at the corner of, um, Division and La Muse, there was three or four cars parked there, and they had their chairs out in the parking lot, and they're in a, a group to get. So, I think that's the biggest challenge that we face of, um, is people in the communities getting together. Um, as far as getting out and stuff, I think that, that most people are following that, so. And great job to our administration, all our council members and everything. I think that, um, overall, and, uh, three things that I did, and I, I know that, um, Kenny, um, mentioned it briefly, but if we go back a week, the projected cases in Mississippi versus what the projected cases are at the peak now have went down significantly, the projected deaths, what they had projected a week ago versus what they are now, and then even the date of the peak keeps going, you know, getting closer to us. And so, overall, I think that, uh, Mississippians, it's evident by looking at our neighbors in Alabama and Louisiana, you know, each day, we're not jumping like they're jumping. And, um, you know, you see that number, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty, but then you look over there, and they've had, you know, five hundred 500, 600 in one day, new cases. So I think that, that we're doing something right, and hopefully that those numbers, they continue to trend downward. That's all I have.
For not much. Hey, I didn't take as long as Kenny or George. Mr. Mayor, how are, how are Public Works facilitating right now? How are they doing?
How they doing? I think we own a skeleton crew. I think there's been a couple of, yeah. And, but they're on call, so if, as needed, the crews are ready to come on and address, you know, emergency situations with anything. But I think out of the three departments, we got 108, 138 in both of those three departments online right now.
What about Mr. Creel's department over at Community Works?
That's all part of that 138. I don't know what this.
I mean, development. What, what responsibilities are we foregoing right now with, with regard to Public Works?
You're saying what are we not doing?
Yeah.
What are we not doing? For the most part, we're not doing.
Immediately, as far as, you know, what we covered at the Utility Authority meeting was the contractual situation with both, you know, picking up the trash, just picking up the debris. So they know that they're, you know, contractually, you know, if they need, they had, I think they had 16 drivers that would do the, the call stuff, but they're on notice, that, you know, they're not off the hook. Contractually, they need to do the things that.
That was one of my concerns. Debris pickup has been a big issue. A lot of people are doing home remakesovers and different things.
And they're running about a day or so behind. I think, Mike, we noted that in our neighborhood the other day, that they were supposed to do it on Friday, I think Thursday's in Woolmarket, right?
Yeah, Thursday for everything.
They might be pushing. I don't know what their, you know, absentee is, but they're probably a day behind, at least Pelican. And, but, you know, I hadn't missed a beat as far as the trash pickup, it's, I mean, the garbage pickup.
This is one of my, we do have communications with them, and they are continuing their services. Councilman Barrett?
He, he made me think of something. One of the issues that I see is, to get picked up by Pelican, you have to have a trash can, basically, or have a trash. And where we, where I, in my ward, we have a lot of empty lots, and these people are going out and working. And so I've noticed a lot of stuff on these lots.
They actually should be picking up if it's across the street. A lot of, a lot of really, they're supposed to be in here.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about lots that maybe, like in Eagle Point, for instance, where a home was washed away in Katrina. These people have been going out and working on those lots that don't have a trash account or anything. And so we may see, especially with our Public Works numbers going down like that, we may see a huge, and they usually come and get those that, that Pelican is not required to get. But we may see a large number of those empty lots, not just in my ward, but throughout the city, that Pelican doesn't normally, you know, pick up, that we have to catch up on whenever we can get back.
The one part of Public Works that's nearly fully staffed, the most fully staffed is Water Store Department, Building Office, Ground Security Department, plus the money we need from public issues program. And also in the water store, sometimes you, these guys are invisible to public in many cases, but every lift station in every ward is checked every day, every well, all 22 wells are inspected every day. There are a whole lot of everyday things that we really can't, not on duty.
Yeah.
But my last count, I saw there were 33 people on duty, 66 off duty.
Public Works? So we have 100 employees?
Yeah. So, but our parts are way back. We still have parts that are technically closed, but they're not fenced. So, you know, activities.
We go through the departments on harbors. Are they completely open? Are they taking transit?
Of course they're not taking any transit, but otherwise they're open and they're tested. And so are harbors, harbor masters, have they all stayed away?
Well, the biggest thing everybody does now is fishing. Is it okay if they fish in the harbors? Because they fish near the bridge. They're fishing everywhere, so that's a big thing.
One of the things that, that, that Biloxi thing, Jackson thing, you know, the governor did leave the door open for us in preparation. Doing that, and also having a front door open. That's still all open, now it's closed at 6:00. I saw over there, you know, and all the same way.
When they're fishing, do they have to quit at 6:00 also?
Yeah. First of all, there's all the gears, all the parts, they're supposed to close at 6:00.
And then one clarification.
It's not the only one. I said to somebody earlier, the place was spending too much time chasing supervisors and people in the harbors.
So one clarification, I wasn't around in 1928, when I did all that Bonnie Carey, and I wasn't here then. That was a little bit before my time even. But you know what you got to think about? Your dad's an expert at that. They had more oysters before 28 than anything. That's one of the capital seafood of the world. Okay, so I don't know how they did that before. How much did they kill then? Because back then, that was, everything was oysters. They did all that starting in 28. The early 1900s was huge. There's oysters way before shrimp down there. So I don't know, when you said it, how many did they kill back then?
Was that when you worked down there?
Your what?
Nothing, nothing. I said, was that when you worked down there, 1928?
I was there. We shot a few.
All right. Did we set up anything for public comments? People can call in or anything like that? Do we need to just move through public comments? Unless there's anybody here, I know sometimes certain members of the staff want to speak or say anything. So I'll open public comments, if there are any. There being none, we'll move to the policy agenda. And unfortunately, I'm, I better step out for a second. Nathan, can you take over for a moment?
Ordinance to amend section 233586, designating an additional building as a Biloxi landmark.
Second. All right. It's a first reading, so we'll move on. Will you read Ordinance B?
Ordinance granting a non-exclusive electric franchise to Mississippi Power.
Who moved that? Do you have any comments, Mr. Tisto?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Mr. Gines? All in favor?
Six of them. Get me out.
Resolution C?
Resolution requesting the Mississippi Legislature to adopt legislation to authorize the governing authorities to levy a tax up to 3%.
Do we, anyone have any questions?
Okay, it was moved by, no, this was tabled, wasn't it? Okay, okay. So it was moved by Glavin and Gines? Okay. Mr. Glavin, do you have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Peter explain and, and see if we got in touch with some of those RV people who had questions about it. I was a little concerned about moving forward with that, with a tax, especially at this time.
Since, since this was tabled on March 24th, I've been in fairly limpy discussions with two of the major, we'd call them more of the luxury park owners. Probably two to three hours with each of them talking about things. They provided some input, which are reflected in some modifications we've made to this, to the previous bill. Now, I can just, generally, their concerns were, they didn't, first of all, they're, they're not happy with any kind of new tax, nobody is. They did ultimately understand, once we talked about how these taxes are being imposed on RV owners in other states, they didn't know that. They looked that up, and they confirmed it. In many cases, it's 6%, for example, in Alabama. It's four and a half to 5% in Louisiana. So we got through that hurdle. The next question was, we don't want this just to go in the general fund. Well, the original legislation said that. Typically, these sort of taxes, just like a restaurant tax, it goes for parks or for tourism, things like that. It has to be dedicated to something that will help promote tourism. And I explained to them, what we're trying to achieve is by filling in a gaps on our major roadways, that ultimately is an economic development driver. It's ultimately going to help tourism. It's going to help create a better infrastructure to get here. It was in a kind of an issue of, well, can we use some of it for, for advertising, the RV industry? I explained to them that in these sort of taxes, I mean, we, we could just say it goes to tourism, and they would have no idea where it goes. By us actually putting it forward and trying to focus it in on a specific project like this, that they would actually be able to track where it goes, and the money would be used. For example, Kissler Gate, Pops Ferry Extension, any sort of future four-laning of Shriners Boulevard. These are all things where we have a match, we have to do a match. This would help fill in that gap. On all of those, we're a little bit short. We're always, sometimes we're just a couple hundred thousand short. So they, they got that. The next thing was, they didn't want, they wanted these then to go to sort of major type projects. They didn't want this money to be used for just filling in a pothole somewhere. And I told them, we have other funds for that. The, the internet is really going to that right now. But, I mean, I felt, so we, we made a reflection in here that this is for a major type project. The project should exceed a million dollars. That's going to put any of those other ones we talked in, into that category. You know, I think we kind of went, and I understood that. One of them is basically in favor of it. One of them is like, well, I'm not sure. I'd have to think about it. Well, I told them, you know, it's, we're facing budget, very little budget concerns this year. And we'd hate to have one of these projects go by the wayside if we didn't at least take the chance. We still have several hoops to go through, through the legislature. It has to get through the legislature. This legislation lets the people vote on this. And, you know, whether they're in favor of it or opposed to it, the people are going to decide. And that's just like with any of y'all. The people get to vote this up or down. I think it is a little easier to go by, other than a restaurant tax. That affects everybody, no matter what. This is a tourism type tax of an area that's never been taxed before. And it just provides some opportunities for that. So, I mean, I think we, we did what we were asked to do, to talk to them and explain to them where we were coming from, that we weren't just targeting them or singling them out. And I think, overall, I think we've done the best we can do.
Okay, thank you. Nathan? Any other questions?
No questions.
Hey, George, he seconded it, so he, look, can you go?
Yeah. I, I just want to say a couple of things. So I, thank you for speaking to those two RV managers and owners. I think that's real important that we talk to the industry. I also have a third RV owner in, that's developing a, a pretty sizable investment in my ward, right off of Cedar Lake. And I think it's, again, I look at this legislation, and it's, it's a, to me, it's a little unusual, because normally it is going to a tourism entity, and you don't have the control, the city usually doesn't, of where those funds get sometimes muddled up. And even if we do support this resolution today, and you bring it to the state legislator, it has to come out, it has to be introduced, it has to come out of committee, then it has to come back to the citizens on a referendum in order for them to vote. And if it doesn't have the industry support when it comes back in the form of a referendum, those RV park managers and owners can say, hey, well, well, look, this got changed, or whatever, and it doesn't reflect what we think is in our best interest. And, and they'll have a lot of influence, I think, on the public, on voting it up or, or down. I'm more comfortable with it today, since those dialogues and those conversations have been had. Thank you.
George?
My personal opinion, this is not the time to put any new tax on the table to anybody for the things we've been going through the last couple of years. Now, whether you do this one, you have a short term limit, there's a term thing you can tax. You're going to do them all at one time. You can't keep sending stuff up there and say this is not going to pass, and send it back down. To me, this is just not the right time to tax anybody in taxes. It's not in place. You know, should it pay it? Maybe so. It's just a long time to do this.
Taxes to users of these facilities, if they have any south, well, of citizen tax. Here's the back way, it's worth a dollar, just. It's not a time to figure out, you need more revenue. I know, once a better time, so I mean, it's back there, based on legislation, you know, requires. So I mean, it's to get it cured. It's not fit to get done. I mean, now's the time, isn't it ever a time?
It's not the time, people. You know, it's just not the time to put something on the table when people are going through what they're going through right now. That's it. That's just a little common sense. This is not the time to be doing anything about taxes.
Thank you.
Dr. Tisto?
Don't have a problem with it at all.
Okay. My, so, this gets sent to, if we pass this, it gets sent to Jackson, it will come back, and it wouldn't be on the ballot until November, and so after that, probably wouldn't take effect till like January. So we're talking like eight months out. Okay.
I think we, we can set the election whenever we feel it's the right time. If, if, if we feel it's not a good time to do it, we could wait. This gives us the, this gives us the right to set that election.
We would want to do that during a regular voting, to where it wouldn't cost as well, though, right?
Correct me if I'm wrong, it has to go to Ways and Means, it has to go to a committee, and the committee has to bring it to a vote on, on the floor, then it has to get passed by the full Senate?
House and Senate.
House, and then, and then it goes to a referendum, if it gets out of that, and then, and then that election date would be set, and all that kind of stuff for the referendum.
That's right. And I mean, before, before we had the COVID issue, there was 17 or 18 noodles that are already in the hopper up there, that are already, they're already there in the local and private sections, so.
So hypothetically, best case scenario, we're looking around Janu, if this was implemented, we're looking around January. Okay, any other questions? I'll call for the question. All in favor? opposed? 4-1 with George Lawrence in opposition, Dixie and Robert Demming out of the ring. Move to item D.
We have a revenue problem.
Resolution appointing Mayor Gillich as female primary representative.
Resolution appointing Mayor Gilich as female primary representative.
Second.
Any discussion? We might wanna wait, wait till the other council members return, it'll be just a second.
No, you're good. We're on something else now. It was moved by George Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. I'm sorry. Kenny Glavine?
I'm sorry, Nathan.
We're on D.
Thank you. Where are we at?
D.
Just got moved. Who moved it?
George.
George and Kenny.
George, discussion?
Yeah, you're just gonna be appointed, you're appointing yourself? What you doing? Do we have to have you represented? That's great, you know, so, that's good.
Who seconded that? Kenny, discussion?
I have none.
Any further discussion on Resolution D? There being none, please signal with, raise your hand in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Would you read Resolution E, please?
Resolution affirming second emergency mayoral proclamation of executive order.
I'll move it.
Moved by Kenny Glavine, seconded by Nathan Barrett. Kenny, discussion?
No, ma'am, I've, I've listened to your press conferences on this, and listen, again, I know this weighs heavy on your head and, and all these decisions that have to be made, but it is in the best interest of our citizens, I think, even though the, you know, it's against being American to say we gotta stay at home, we gotta do certain things, but it's also been in times of great tragedy and, and strife that Americans have made these sacrifices so that we could win. So, thanks for helping us win.
Nathan Barrett?
One, one quick question.
Councilman Lawrence?
Last time I did it for a week, to this meeting, you're doing this one from one to end.
Yeah, until the future, I think, I mean, until it's rescinded, I think as far as the.
Well, the state is at least till the 20th.
Subject to being amended, rescinded, or when the state of emergency ends. That's, I think that's how it reads, when I read it.
The states is in effect until April 20th, I believe?
Correct.
But we wouldn't have another council meeting until the, that's, the 20th is a Friday, is that correct?
It is.
So that would be the 21st, 22nd, 24th would be the next time that we met, so.
But we could put, we, if, 21st is what?
21st.
Our next meeting's on the 21st? I mean, we could still, if we wanted to timestamp it at our next meeting, we could still say, you know, we'll rescind this.
It's a formality, we could just do it at our meeting, just like we're doing this one now. I mean.
Right.
If the, if Tate extends it, then he extends the state of emergency. If he doesn't, it expires and we just come back and make.
The only thing that's different between ours and Tate's is we have a curfew. Everything else is.
Yes, that was the seven-day kinda.
Yeah.
Discussion at one point in time, but, you know, again, to stay in line with every, with every, all the other mayors, I think it's, it's appropriate and, you know, we would urge, you know, everyone to understand what we're trying to do. Yeah, but.
So on April 21st, you're gonna have something again?
I hope, I hope it's over by about 21st.
Yeah, we do. Well, the thing's pretty coming down, and they're shutting down now. So you're talking about in a couple, two, three weeks, you're gonna be at the tail end and everything. So I mean, that's just the way it works out. That's how viruses do. That's the name of the game. And right now, they're falling down, you know, with the people, who are, so in a couple, ten days from now, it's gonna really be lower. And they have to, which means you have to look at, when you're gonna look at opening up the city again, those steps, you know?
What is?
And, you know, if there's a need, of course, we'd ask to, any kind of special meeting if we needed to take, you know, other than just the course that we're, we're on right now. I would ask, you know, you, Mr. President, to.
Thank you. When we, when we discuss this, this action here, how does it, what does it do for the city that the governor's act doesn't?
Well, I think we're more, more restrictive, especially when it comes to the curfew. He didn't call for a curfew. He called for shelter at home. And again, our, our, Peter, if you wanna address that, you know, I think we're more restrictive than, than the governor. That was one of minimal's conditions that he had set.
As far as the central business, we basically accept his definitions of the central business. Other cities went beyond that, we did not deviate roughly from that. Curfew is our, is our main thing. We had actually put the prohibition on El Solons first, but then the governor came back and did that the next day. A lot of what he put in, I mean, in fact, they implemented a lot of it in the city's third executive.
His, yeah, with his problem.
I think other than the curfew, and then we have all the recreational voting issues and the beach, closed the beaches, that was a little more, and you had a, you had a 10-person rule.
Right, and we had restrictive parking and things like that. With regard to reimbursable monies, do we have to have this to, to increase our potential or probability of recovering money?
Yes, I'm, I'm sure we do. And, and we've taken the action according to our own ordinance as far as hazard pay or premium pay, and that would, I think, you know, position us to maximize that. There, there's also some things that, you know, I think justice, on today's agenda, something about $106,000 that was through justice, that I think Senator Wicker had had some conversation with, so, and there may be more along those lines, rather than memophema, the other things that would help the cities specifically, you know.
Well, I know during times of, of environmental catastrophes like hurricanes or storms that come through, we have to declare a state of emergency to qualify for certain reimbursable things. I didn't know if this would be the case in, in this or not.
On the interruption insurance, I know that doesn't qualify, are they gonna do anything about that nationwide to try to get people to?
This interruption, you know, I'm not sure, just the personal, the, for private business, and, you know, there's a whole gamut of stuff there. Our, our auditors are asking, asking the questions, I mean, specifically, as far as payroll forgiveness, we're, it was not applied all to state and local governments, you know, public entities. So we're researching that Peter is, and as well as our accounts. You know, with regard to making payroll, we're making payroll, right? And we're actually, time and a half, but there's no, none of that trillion-dollar stuff coming down this way, at least, you know, qualifying, qualified. The only thing that we know, I think this was the, the Justice Department allocation for Biloxi, you know, I think it was six-point-something million for the state, and then it was distributed to us, to, I think, well, down to 106,000, I think it is on tonight's agenda, Mike? So there may be other avenues, but it won't be memophema to that stuff, I would think.
The virus never qualified, but then in our discussion nationwide, where they're looking at trying to get the insurance to go along with paying some of this interruption insurance, a lot of people, not just the city, businesses, casinos, everybody, you know? It's a big deal.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Thank you.
Councilman Barrett? How many people rent from the city as far as buildings and things like that that we have? Are we giving them? Are we giving them any kind of cushion or anything through this time?
I'll tell you, none of the, all the landlords that own any property that my business is running have not given me any breaks. They know that, they know that the government and the SBA are doing a lot of programs for rental assistance and things like that, so they're not doing it for landlords, they're doing it for tenants.
So we, we, that's all we have. I thought that we had more than that. There's only about 12. Okay.
If they are doing it for landlords, I hope you're fine. Any further discussion on this item? All of us in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries six, one, Deming's in opposition. That'll bring us to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Some, yes.
Got a motion by Paul Tisdale. Do I have a second? Felix Skynes, seconded the consent agenda. We'll start with discussion on my right here to Councilman Lawrence.
On M, Mike, they got the two numbers that differ, 289 and 269, that need to be corrected?
We say M is in Mike's.
Yeah, M and it's Mike.
Michael Leonard.
This is the purchase of software, it's moving money from an account to another account. All software, did you remember, pull all software out of, out of the apartments now? All software goes through IT, and then, partners can buy software. H, very interesting, all software.
My question was, it was, they were moving 289, but the bill was 269, so I was just wondering why it was two different numbers? That's what I was asking you. There are two different numbers in there. One is 289, as they moved around, and that one, the bill is $269, so I didn't know if you had a, had the correct number in there, that's all I was asking you. There are two different numbers. Any resolutions, so? That's all. I was asking you on that one there.
Anything else, Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah, on P, you know, created a new Hurricane Katrina infrastructure thing on P to pay the engineers, is there some particular reason we created something new to do this for Katrina?
Yes, sir. What it is, is we brought on a new project engineer, uh, the help of the infrastructure, placing in another.
Get in front of a mic if you would want.
Get rid of any of them?
Nice. So, under the agenda item P, we brought on a new project engineer to take the place of a. And she is a Neil Schaefer employee, but she'll be working full-time as a City of Biloxi representative and project manager. So this new project, it's just an internal accounting item, so that she'll be working on multiple projects on the infrastructure, and they each have their own specific numbers, so this is like an umbrella numbered so that she can work on multiple projects and bill, the company can bill their time to it. So it's not a new project area, it's just an internal means so we can track how much we're paying Neil Schaefer.
Well, for the people at home and the people that will be looking at the record in the future, will you state your name and your department?
Yes, sorry. Walter A. Rhodey, City Biloxi Infrastructure Program Manager.
Thank you. Nathan?
I was just trying to figure out what you were doing there.
You have any else on the, on the consent agenda?
No, no.
Dixie?
That's it.
Ms. Newman, excuse me? Councilman Tisdale? No? Councilman Glavine?
Done.
Councilman Guines? Councilman Barrett? I'm coming back around to you, sir. Are you finished looking too? All right.
Yeah, what is the AT&amp;T that we got PM anything? Not AT, what is the cable one? It's, I know we forced to do that.
You got more people working from home right now, probably in the future, than you don't have a fan present for them? All right, we're gonna ban them. But man, I mean, also with all the screen that we're in, that would port to be, that as well. I love bandwidth, very small power difference among.
I appreciate that.
Excuse me. Do we have any, any objections to anything on the council? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, however, I am in opposition to J.
Q, R, S.
TV?
R, S. Like I forget.
You're in opposition to Q, R?
Opposition to Q, R, S.
And Councilman Guines is in opposition to item Q, item R, and item S.
What were you in opposition to?
J. Just compensation. Take it, move on to the routine agenda?
Code enforcement.
Oh, do we have a code enforcement?
If the code enforcement, I'm gonna do my best to.
If they raise that seat up a little bit.
A whole lot.
We have one property, I think probably only Councilman Barrett will know anything about it, it's called the Coalville Grocery Store. It was an eyesore that they've been dealing with for many years out in Wool Market, the property owner walked away from it. This property is still in violation. Is that the way he says it?
It's been in violation for 20.
This property is still in violation. Unfortunately, it belongs to the state of Mississippi, and so we've just gotten a letter yesterday from the state allowing us to clean it up, not giving us any money, but telling us that when the time comes for the property to be sold, that we can, we can attach our costs to those, to that property and be paid at a later date. So, that's what's happening to the Coalville Grocery Store, it's now our baby to take care of. You okay on that, Councilman Barrett?
Yeah, no issue. I think that, that, I've lived out in Wool Market for, I don't know, 15 years now, and I think it was open for about a week when I was out there, and that's about it. They opened for a week and shut down. It was an eyesore, they cleaned it up, opened for a week, I guess no business or whatever, and they shut down, and it's been like that for many years, over 10 years now.
So we'll be able to file a, a judgment against the property, and then the costs associated with our cleanup can be.
COVID or Co- COVID or Cobell? Which one? COVID or Cobell?
COVID. It's the Coal. Coal Grocery.
Got you.
I have no longer a real name.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a, it's a good thing, it's in really bad shape.
Okay.
Does that complete our?
That completes code enforcement.
Code enforcement, thank you, Jerry. Just kidding. Thank you, Mike. Move this to the routine agenda. Do we have any questions on the routine agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Now that we've moved and seconded it by Paul Tisdale and seconded by Felix Skynes, do we have any questions on the routine agenda?
Yeah, Walter, any money?
None.
Unfortunately not, uh, councilmen, we are, we are trapped behind this COVID emergency. They didn't see, I can't, all, yes, we're three, three million dollars trapped, at least, you know, on the, in here, coming some potatoes. They didn't see, uh, give them, or, or, so, all on that.
You have any idea how long we're gonna be behind?
Three months, yeah, it's gonna be three months.
Yeah, I know, but I said, this next month is gonna be, that far behind? The three me you're talking about? It might be a month, two months? All right, thank you.
That be all? Call for the question, all in favor of the routine agenda, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to recess.
Motion to recess by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Felix Skynes, all in favor? We have a recess.
If you can, please exit out the front door.